So I see it's four o'clock, so I think I'll call the March 29th, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. Welcome everyone and remind everyone that this is being, a meeting is being recorded and we're on Zoom. So will the clerk please call everyone who's present?
Ms. Escudero.
Here.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
And Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
And the full Select Board is present, thank you very much. I will read the consent agenda. It's Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation, the 12th proclamation, National Library Week, 2021 proclamation, April 4th through April 10th. And I'll just comment that it was at the request of the school committee that we considered the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation at this time. And I'll continue with the consent agenda. The extension of hours for the sale of all alcoholic beverages by Nishada Country Club located at 1861 Sudbury Road on Sunday, April 4th, 2021, to begin at 10:00 instead of 12:00 p.m. And also an extension of hours for the sale of all alcoholic beverages by Nishada Country Club located at 1861 Sudbury Road on Sunday, May 9th, 2021, to begin at 10:00 a.m. instead of 12:00 p.m. On both of those days, starting two hours earlier than normal. One being upcoming Easter Sunday and the other day being Mother's Day. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Duggan.
Okay, well, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escudero.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. The town manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So you have the printed report in your packet. I'll just run through a few of those highlights briefly. First, there was a few attachments. One of them was a letter of support for our regional vaccine clinic that we submitted to DPH that was submitted by our legislative delegation for the communities. You know, they did that voluntarily. They didn't need a lot of prompting. They've been, our legislative delegation has been deeply supportive of what we're trying to do. And still no word, as I sit here now, as to whether or not we're going to get approval, but it's good to get that vote of support from the legislators. So I have a brief item in here about the American Recovery Plan Act, AARPA, ARPA, which is the most recent federal stimulus law with regards to COVID response. And where's, under the information I've received, we're supposed to, we're supposed to Concord's going to get an appropriation of about $5.5 million, which is good. Actually, it's funny because we get, we get the direct appropriation for, that other places would get for counties as well. So not having, not having meaningful county government here in Massachusetts, at least is going to pay off in the amount of stimulus we're receiving. So general, we've received the general guidance in terms of the uses. It's to respond to the pandemic and negative economic consequences. Premium pay for essential workers, necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband, and then government services to the extent that a pandemic lets us lower revenue. So revenue replacement, you know, compensating essential workers and economic recovery are the big, and then water, sewer, broadband investments. Those are the kind of big categories. The Treasury Department is going to be coming forward with more specific guidance. So we are right now in the process of prioritizing what we think we would want to do. There certainly is no limit to what we could, we certainly have more than $5.5 million worth of things that we could probably invest in under those categories. And these funds don't expire until December 31st, 2024. So unlike the CARES Act where we felt like we were under some duress to use or lose, this, these funds will be with us for a while and it will take some time to, you know, we'll have the ability and the flexibility to respond in the short term for things like economic recovery, which we know our needs now, and also see as we come out of the pandemic, you know, where additional investments are needed and to look at, and gives us a little bit of time to plan for some water, sewer, or broadband projects if we decide we want to go in that direction as well. So it's, it's definitely good news. I definitely think there's some needs there that are pandemic-related, and this money will be helpful in, you know, in helping our local economy and our local workforce bounce back. So then we have, I put some information in there, including a spreadsheet about our active litigation cases. It had been mentioned, I don't think at a meeting, but it mentioned in a different space that we had, I think, 28 open. And so Chris Carnby here in the office, our administrative manager, did a really thorough analysis and kind of compiled everything he could find from the, from the public docket. And then just to make sure we had that, our, our results were consistent with the town councils. We did send them to town council for review, and they were. And in fact, council had already submitted their annual town report that said that there was only, you know, really two cases that were open that they were working on. So there were a number of cases that were listed as open that were not in fact open. And then there were some tax title cases that town council doesn't really handle, and those are pretty common. There's a, tax title things are generally fairly automated. We have a vendor that handles those for us. So when I say automated, meaning if a re-urge gets to a certain point, then, then the town, our attorneys on behalf of the town take, do filings and those kinds of things. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that there really are a very small number of open cases. And some of the ones are also tort matters, like for insurance settlements and things like that, that my, our insurance company retains counsel for, town council does not represent us on those. A good example of that would be the hard drive issue. That's, the town council does not represent us on that. We have insurance and their attorneys retained by them, represent us for that matter. The budget book for FY22 is online. It's basically consistent with the summary that we presented, I think, last week or two weeks ago. Once again, I want to commend the Finance Department for putting together a great book. It's the format that we used last year, which is a change from prior years, but I think it's approachable and I look forward to kind of, we're holding off on doing a final print copy because of, we expect the budget numbers to change a bit. And as we've talked about many times, the budget this year is unusual compared to most years. And the, the information with the, with the ARPA and the revenue recovery may, may impact some of the things that we, we actually ended up putting in the warrant, sorry, not the warrant, in the motion for the budget at town meeting. So that's, so there are possible changes there. I'll come back to Jerome, because Kate is here. Also, Joe, Chief O'Connor signed on with 32 chiefs in support of a program for restorative justice, which I know is Concord's always been a big supporter of. The compost facility, which I know is very popular, is going to be open soon. For hours and other rules about that, people should go to the CPW website. And Walden Street Natural Gas update, we went through quite a bit for that grant of location for this project, the national grid network is starting. It may end up in some work as they get, you know, closer to Route 2. And as we have updates on that, we will provide them. Right now, they're, they're focused on Lincoln, so they'll likely come back to Walden Street and Concord to do additional work. We are part of a coalition that has been awarded a grant for the Taxi Livery and Hackney Transportation Partnership. Town of Sudbury is really leading that effort, but it gives us town of Concord about 15,600 to provide transportation for seniors, kind of like a, it's, it's almost like, it's a supplement or a supplant to the ride, the on-demand ride program that the MBTA runs. So for doctor's appointments and things like that. And Junction Village Open Space Task Force, which we recently appointed members to, is now underway, and Marcia tells me going gangbusters in getting ready to do some of their work. And then we have two firefighters, Brian LeFave and Eric Harries, who have joined the District 14 dive team, which is a benefit to the town. We are in a kind of a remote location, not a remote location, but for that, the way that district map is done, we're kind of at an outer edge of it. So having a couple of team members would be helpful. And then before we go to Jerome, I just wanted to note, former patrol officer Jack Skinner passed away, and I think there's a wake starting as we speak here this evening and services tomorrow that are being coordinated by the Police Department. He was with Concord for 43 years as a patrol officer, sergeant, inspector. And of note, he was the sketch composite officer for the department. And his sketches led to the identification of many suspects and arrests. And he also was an artist of some note. In fact, there's a painting, at least one that I know of, a painting in the Select Board meeting room that is one of his. So we extend our condolences to the Skinner family. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate for the update on Jerome.
Could I ask just a question before we move to Jerome, which is regarding the ARPA funding? I understand that it might have impact on the FY22 numbers. What about FY21? Is there a way in which it could impact that as well, given that it can backfill revenue that's lost? And what, what would that do, again, as we approach town meeting and the budgetary process and also rules about amending warrant articles?
So, well, in terms of FY21, we have had that conversation internally. The biggest, the most obvious one is the parking meter revenue. That was, you know, we stopped that program as a way, as an economic vitality enterprise to support the local businesses. That's why we stopped charging at the meters. And so that's something that we're, I mean, the Treasury Department guidance, we want to have a little more clarification before we make any tweaks to FY21. But if it turns out that we can, and I'm hypothesizing here, so don't, don't lead me through this, but theoretically, as we sit here now, depending what the guidance says, we could backfill the lost revenue for parking. We have a carry forward that is a part of our budget for FY22, and FY21 carry forward. So you could reduce that amount of carry forward, or I should say, let me say it back, you could increase that amount, and then whatever we supplanted with ARPA funds could then be returned to free cash. So if 200,000 of our, if 200,000 of, you know, if we get 200,000 in from ARPA to backfill the parking meter revenue, then 200,000 of the carry forward, which is about 800,000 now, could then go to free cash, and we could still have our budget be balanced.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering. And I wonder about hotel and meals.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we don't, it's not, like I said, unfortunately, I've just given you the full sum of what I know about ARPA and we've been trying to, we've been getting some guidance from Congresswoman for Hand's Office, but I think it's the Treasury Department really supposed to come out with guidance. The only thing we've been told is that it'll be more flexible than CARES Act money.
Seem like it.
But like I said, I think it's a lot of money and there's, and there's a lot of flexibility, but that doesn't mean that it's just going to be, you know,
Mannequin.
loosey-goosey, kind of lets us throw it around. I think we want to be, because we, because we have a few years to really work through it, I think we should be pretty purposeful and balanced in our approach. And so we want to hold back. There are a couple of short-term things that are relatively low cost that I do think we should do right away to support economic vitality, things that we've, whether it's supporting outdoor dining or what have you, that we're probably going to look at, you know, right now, because we know that they're under the heading of economic vitality and economic recovery. But in terms of the bigger ticket items, I think we need to get some guidance first.
And as long as the numbers are going in the right way, the amendments are probably going to be feasible at town meeting.
Well, it's what's in, it's what's in the motion. And so, you know, it's unusual for a budget to have a different motion than what's in, what's in the warrant.
Yeah, that's my worry.
As you've heard me, as you've heard me say many times, this is an unusual year. And we would make sure that certainly, we're not going to write it on the floor of town meeting, but if we decide that there needs to be changes, they would be, we would publicize them very well in advance, so people would have a sense of that.
Or maybe a special town meeting within town meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So Stephen, I know, I know there's a lot of unknowns at this point, but there's also the grants for small businesses that will also inform your proposed ideas for economic vitality, because there's some direct reimbursements there that are, at least on the surface, look pretty generous. All right, let's see, Susan.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. Isn't it the case that the dollar number in the warrant can't be increased, but it can be decreased? In other words, the warrant, the articles can't be expanded beyond whatever the scope is, but they can be?
Certainly for CPA, that's, that's the case, for CPA specifically.
For, I mean, to some extent, there's, there's a little bit discretion on an increase. I don't think it's an absolute, but yeah, generally, it's, it can get out of scope in a hurry, increasing it. And I saw Carrie turn a video on, I don't, it's not our intent to increase necessarily the funding. It's really more to reassign. I don't care if you want to comment on that.
I just wanted to say one thing. These are grant funds, and grant funds do not need to be appropriated by town meeting. So if we were to use some of these funds to, to sort of plug the hole for the lost parking meter revenue, we wouldn't be increasing the budget.
Right. Thank you.
Always helpful, always helpful to have. I'm sorry, go ahead, Susan, you want to finish?
Just a couple little questions about the, the court cases. Where, where was that information taken from, that someone thought there were that many open? Is it on a state, on the state's site, or?
I think it's on numbers. I know, Chris, if you're, if you wanted to jump in on this one, just let know where you found all that.
Hi, good afternoon. The Mass Trial Court website has a list of trial court cases, as we know and can expect. I think COVID has possibly changed the speed at which they update the status of each case. So it's a lot of dated information. But the other, there's also a Superior Court website on the mass.gov website that does appellate cases and Supreme Judicial Court cases, which, as you know, we, we have a case there. So that's the basis of our inquiry.
Thank you. And just one other small detail, the travel or the taxi, the ride funds, the 15,000, does the COA kind of track that, or is that through the town manager's office, or?
It's actually Marcia at the PLM has been, has been coordinating the partnership with the town of Sudbury. But Kate, I don't know if, but the ride coordination is done, I think.
It's going to be done through the Human Services Office.
Okay, thank you.
Terry.
Yeah, there's a lot of good news in this package, so that's great, having new news for a change. So Chris, I really appreciate having this list of these cases. And one thing that I didn't totally understand was, and Stephen, you might have alluded to it, you said something about there, they say they're open cases, but they're not open. Are you referring to what's on the list that Chris did? Or I guess, because my question is, on the red items, there's about seven open cases. And so I'm a little bit lost because of that.
So in the memo, I have, I described the color coding. So closed are in red, meaning the list, the underlying list is what Chris and council, for that matter, the lists, I think matched, found. And so rather than us go in and show it, change their designation as closed, we wanted to show, if you went online now, what you'd see, and then color code it to what the reality is. And so that's why we use color coding instead of changing the designations.
Oh, okay. So if it's in red, it might say open, but that's because it's closed. On the state, it's not updated yet, it's really closed.
Correct.
Except for those three that you outlined. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And if I have some other questions, I'm wondering if I should just, just a couple, a few questions about specific cases to ask you, Stephen, offline, or the board wants, next time we have an executive session anyway, if we spend five or 10 minutes. I don't know what the rest of my, whether my colleagues have other questions about these, or I'm the only one.
Well, why don't we talk offline? Because I think you would have to have an executive session to have the conversation.
That's what I mean.
And we would need to post, we would need to post the case. And so why don't we talk offline and get a better sense of what the questions are? And if it's, if we feel like it's a better, if we're better suited, bringing it to the full board, we can do that.
So if it's more a question like, well, what is this case? And what is this case? And what's the status of it? Like a one-minute thing. How do we even post, you post an executive session somehow, not on any one specific case, more like a litigation update?
When we talk offline, we can figure that out.
Okay, that sounds good. And I'm really glad to see the town supporting the C4RJ. It's amazing how it's grown, started in Concord. I was, for like five years, and 32 towns now, it's just amazing. I also really appreciated the budget. I haven't gone through it all, but I checked out those hyperlinks on page 10. That is a great, great tool there. You click on the section you want, it comes right up. Transportation grant, I just had one question. So we're getting about 15,000 for the town of Concord. Is that money for ride subsidies for people who are using the ride, or is it also for administrative costs?
I don't know, Kate, if you know that off the top of your head. I don't know, I don't know the division of that. I think there is an administrative set aside.
Yeah, so we have about a 7% administrative fee that's on, like, on top of that. And then there's two livery companies that are partnered with as part of the grant. And so we would be paying their, their fees. And depending on where they're going, one is coming out of Framingham and another out of Sudbury. And so they bill for travel time into Concord, and then there's one flat rate for taking, picking somebody up from Concord and going into the city, into either hospital area, either the Mass General, Mass Pioneer area, or the Longwood Brigham area, so.
And I think they went through, I think MAPC went through procurement process. So it's kind of like a fixed price for the two, for the two companies. I say fixed price, depending on a number of variables, but it's, it's, you know in advance before you get in the car with the cost of the ride is.
That's correct. And the persons who are participating in Concord are paying the same fees as those participating in Sudbury and others. So it, it isn't just because the livery company happens to be in Framingham that those in Framingham are getting a quote "better deal," but it's, it's really a consortium.
Okay. Great. Jane?
Just, just to finish out that question, was this always intended to be a additive to the, the ride or the council, something through the council and aging? In other words, never intended to be a part of the efforts we've made to do other forms of cross-connect or other rideshare programs?
Well, we had a different partnership with Sudbury and a number of other communities. Not crosstown connect, that's with the town of Acton, which I think that's also, I don't know if that's been suspended or not. Plus, we had gotten, we had gotten a grant for a local shuttle from Mastioti that they took back because of the pandemic.
Right.
And then we had, and I forget what we called it, but we did have a different type of partnership with Sudbury. And I think that was more about systemic improvements. This is just a different type of grant, different type of partnership. So it's, this is, I don't want to call it a one-off, because I think once COVID is past and we're back to normal commuting patterns, I think this, this will be an important ingredient in, as we rebuild that mix, but it is not tied to a larger thing yet.
And I just wanted to ask, I mean, it's, it's exciting that we, we received 5.5 million. And, you know, it'd be great if we could do some, you know, posthumates or, or backdating of some of the money. But I was interested in seeing that none of it could be used for things like transportation or any of the other things that, especially locally, that we've learned change during this pandemic. So, you know.
So, so one of the things, if I, if I may, Jane, is he's, the president has been talking about built back better.
Yep.
And the impression I've gotten from, like, watching the news, is that those investments are a part of that effort. Infrastructure and transportation is the kind of next thing. But again, I think we need to get some guidance from Treasury Department when they talk about infrastructure investments, before we can say definitively that transportation programs would not be eligible, that we may find a way to do that.
Good. Thanks.
All right. If there are no other questions, I think we're ready for you, Kate, and thanks for being back here.
Sure. I submitted a memo to the town manager, and I believe it was included in the board's packet. I think in the interest of time, unless you'd like me to go through that memo, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Essentially, for members of the general public who are here, we had two separate bids. One was a, what's called a CP, or a Public Works bid under Chapter 30B. That was for all of the construction that is not associated with a building. Chapter 149 governs public works building projects, so that is anything that has four walls and a roof. And so that was for the bathroom building. There's four walls and a roof there. But it isn't for the pavilion. The pavilion obviously doesn't have four walls, although it does have a roof. So the pavilion and the groundwork for the park came in at a little bit under 1.1 million. And the pavilion, which we had as ad alternate number one, was 212,000. And then ad alternate number two was a covered structure that connected the pavilion to the bathroom building that came in at 16,000. We've chosen not to pursue that. I had some artistic renditions that we went through. $16,000, by the way, is a fine price where it actually gets substantially less than we thought it was going to be. I think it's just an economy of scale thing, but it actually ends up obstructing the view from the, from the open-air pavilion down to the water. And it really doesn't serve a whole lot of purpose, other than kind of being a nuisance. So we, we've decided not to pursue that. So we are in the process of negotiating the contract with Pol Contracting Incorporated, which the town manager will sign for the park work. We've chosen to rebid the building work under Chapter 149 for a variety of reasons, but the most pressing is that the construction work came in over budget, whereas the park work came in under. So while technically we could have done the project and accepted the low bids in both scenarios, we would have actually been overpaying by quite a bit for the bathroom building. And so what we've chosen to do is to move from a lumber to a timber frame. A timber frame is less processed, comes in a kind of a more exposed beam type of look. It's actually, would be exactly what we put out for the back, for the pavilion, rather, excuse me. So both would, would match one another. And then the interior construction needs to be done on-site, but essentially, it's, it's almost like a prefabricated home. So it's built in a timber frame workshop or mill, and then it's brought into Concord as very large pieces, probably all four walls, and then constructed here on-site by putting it together. And so it negates the need for us to be able to, or have to pay prevailing wage, because the majority of the construction of, of that structure will be off-site and then trucked in. We have not yet to gone out yet, because we're redoing the specs for the bathroom building and changing out some of the timber for PVC piping, as far as for the, for the eaves. And we're changing to an asphalt roof instead of metal, in the hopes that it, that'll bring the price down considerably.
So is it also a question of timing in terms of when you go out for these new bids?
Sure. So there's about somewhere between 12 and 18 weeks' worth of work that needs to be done on the site prior to even being able to lay a foundation. And so we have plenty of time to bid the bathroom building. We could wait and, and even do it, you know, closer We could wait and, and even do it, you know, closer to summer. Um, so I think our, our goal is likely to get the bid out on the street after April school vacation in the hopes of awarding something in, um, early, uh, June. And, um, we'll be able to see them bring that to construction, um, most likely in August or September.
So there's no, um, consideration or appetite at this point to delay even further in terms of going out to bid? Because right now everybody's, um, you know, going after all these construction firms.
I, I'm sorry, delay the park bit or just the building?
The building.
Well, the, the issue is, is that, um, and we could, um, but the problem with that is that the park contract contains laying the foundation and some of the other things that need to happen in order for the bathroom building to go. So if we were to delay, say for a year, you would have a foundation with nothing on top of it. And it would jeopardize the, the integrity of the foundation, um, particularly through the winter months. And some of that also, um, has the underground, uh, tanks and, um, and, uh, retention ponds for stormwater. So it really is all integrated. It's just that we had to bid them separately because of, um, the bidding laws.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
Um, I just wanted to ask a couple of things. One, and I know this is probably out of left field, but not surprising. Um, has there been any discussion with, um, CMLP about solar on the roof? Um, especially because we're talking about a different roof, uh, approach?
Yeah. So we had Kate Hanley look into that. Um, unfortunately, when we did the initial, uh, we, we weren't actually clearing too many trees. And we don't get as much direct sunlight there. And the amount of electricity that we need is actually very small because we only have the bulbs that are in the bathroom and then one parking, um, area, emergency light. And so we would probably generate more than, than what we need. Um, so CMLP is actually going to be doing the electrical, um, conduit for us. Um, and so we can, of course, look at that, um, as we go, but we, we didn't think, it wasn't particularly cost effective.
Okay. Um, and then the other question I had is, um, to the extent that there is a delay and I, having also been aware of the White Pond, uh, uh, process and project, which by the way, you, both, uh, Kate and Stephen should be complimented on going forward as it is. Um, but I'm wondering if, if there's an advantage or disadvantage of putting some temporary toilets out there if we are delayed. Um, since I've, I, I know that, that, um, the lack of bathrooms right now is a problem at White Pond. And I suspect there's only going to be more, you know, as the summer months come, it's going to be an attractive space. And it's better to, to offer something than not.
So we're contractually obligated actually because it's, it's a construction site. And obviously we need to give the people who are working there, um, the ability to be able to use the facilities. And so, um, I believe that it would not just be for people who are working there, but anybody. Uh, the one thing that I will say is that part of the contract, um, is the, this liability clause because they're going to be keeping some very heavy machinery there, particularly through the clearing of invasives and some of the grubbing of the woods. And so as much as I know people will, will want to wander in and, and may do so, we are trying to let people know that they really shouldn't be in and around there until, um, until they've at least cleared out the invasives and some of the heavier work.
Well, please don't, anybody watching, take this as, as licensed.
I just felt like I, I just, I wanted to make sure that people don't think it's, it's.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just trying.
But every time I go there, there's people walking. So I understand that it's, it's a, it's a place that people are going to use.
Yeah.
Carrie?
Uh, I want to commend Kate for writing this report and explaining it and thinking of, uh, the idea of using the timber frame. Excuse me, instead of the lumber, because it looks like we saved quite a bit of money doing that. And that's like kind of thinking out of the box. It's really great. And also commending both you and Stephen about the facility department. The fact now, if I have this right, if we now have an electrician and a plumber, which we wouldn't have had before, which saves another approximately 100,000. So excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
So, um, I was just curious. I mean, it sounds like things are moving in a, the direction of using a more modular construction approach, which I think is great. And, you know, when we're talking about, uh, public restroom facilities, I guess there are a number of vendors that do that kind of thing. I was thinking that, you know, we have not just one, but two and possibly three, uh, public restroom projects. Um, the, the ride out one that was, you know, put on the bubble. And it sounds like maybe now that might be able to squeeze in, um, that gosh, you know, I work with a vendor on through, you know, and then at White Pond, there's this temporary trailer, but again, putting in a more permanent facility. And so like to, to do, you know, three for the price of two or something, you know? I mean, because these are at this point, I think fairly commodity types of, um, you know, structures. They're not, when we started out, we were talking about doing, you know, composting toilets and all that stuff. And it required a more custom build approach, but this, I don't know. There, I mean, it's not feel fully off the shelf. You just buy it online and have it dropped off by FedEx. But, you know, there is, there is probably something closer to that than the pure custom build.
Yes. Yeah. We're actually looking at, um, some, they're sort of modular home style. But, um, for, for the ride out facility, I'm not sure if you were, um, involved or even kind of keeping up with Concord Academy's, uh, plane fields that they have that are along route to, but something not as grand as, as what they have there, but something similar to that with a, with a prefab. Um, when we priced it out for Jero, it was, um, again, it's, it was economy of scale and the timber frame that came in, um, from the low bid also has a conquered connection because the gentleman who owns the company, his father works in town. And so he's very excited to be able to work with us and has made the price very reasonable. So, um, it was actually less expensive to, to do the timber frame than a, than a prefab right now.
And, and I think in terms of, uh, we did put ride out into FY 23. I think when we discussed the capital, um, we, we, it was pointed out in the column for FY 22. And I think we said that that should have been in FY 23 because it was on the bubble. Um, but in the end we didn't move it out a year. Um, and I, I agree with you, Matt. I think modular, um, you know, there's, I mean, each, each building gets designed for each site. And so I think our timing was not our friend in terms of being able to get kind of a, a multiple facility, you know, arrangement going. But I do think Rideout is probably a good, an excellent candidate because it is a pretty straightforward site for a modular building. Whereas I think White Pond is more, um, it's septic, it lead, you know, it's, it's the, uh, title five issues, uh, one of the reasons. Uh, I thought that, I shouldn't really say it because Kate knows, knows way more about them. But I thought it was a title five issues were the reason why we couldn't have a permanent bathroom there.
It's sad that I know so much more about toilets. This is really, but, uh, with White Pond, it's a, it's a bit, um, it's a bit of a haul because you actually have to pump it into, so the waste would go into a chamber and then has to be pumped up the hill and then into the leaching field. Um, the White Pond Associates did a, a kind of a full schematic build out of that. Um, and this was, you know, probably 15 years ago now. Um, but the model is very impressive. It's also very expensive. So I would think if we wanted to ever have something permanent down there, we would probably utilize a tight tank storage that would then have to be pumped. But right now we're just going to stick with the restroom trailer.
Uh, this is the first time I've actually understood why the trailer was the preferred option. Now I'd get.
Yes, because it's, it's straight uphill. And so it needs to be a pretty powerful pump to get the, the waste up the hill.
All right. Uh, I think we're good. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Maybe more than you bargained for, but it's always helpful to take advantage of the.
I, I have told the manager, uh, that it's, uh, trash and potties seems to be our business.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, all right. Um, the next item on the agenda is, are we done with your town manager's report? Let me ask you that. Okay, good. Um, move on to the, um, chair's remarks. Um, let me just start by thanking everyone in town who stepped up, um, for positions across the town for the elected positions. And also, um, congratulate Henry Dane, who was elected to the select board and will be joining us officially after a town meeting in June. So congratulations, Henry. Um, all right. Uh, and I also want to, um, acknowledge, um, our chief financial officer and her staff and the town manager and all of his staff who worked on that budget book. That's a huge undertaking. And, um, we'll all read it once and we may have, it sounds like we may have to go back and read it a second time if there are changes that are going to be made to it. So, um, thanks for all the work that was done there. I'm going to move on to the biomass resolution, um, there, that was included in the packet. Um, there were, it, it came to the select board, having been endorsed by CAB, um, by CSAC, um, I believe by Concord Ken and also the CMLP board. Um, I had a couple of questions when the resolution first came in and I directed them to Alice Kaufman, um, for the CMLP board. And you can see, um, her response that was included in the packet, uh, with some, um, minor but important, change, uh, to the resolution that came in. So is there any, are there any questions or comments about that? And again, this is in keeping with, um, what we're trying to accomplish in terms of our climate and resilience goals and action steps, uh, that have been outlined there. Uh, Jane?
Um, I, I only want to, um, compliment on, compliment all of those who went, who put the resolution in opposition to state subsidies and incentives for biomass plants together. I mean, I followed this in a number of, with a number of the hats I wear on. And it's interesting because this is consistently, um, this is consistent with the concerns raised on biomass as regards to climate, um, that have gone, have, that have gone back 25 years. So, um, I'm glad we're doing this. I hope we're doing this. Um, and I also want to just note that I don't, I don't know of any kind of resolution or, um, motion that's come to the select board that has had this wide a range of endorsements already. And I think that's, that should be, you know, this is, this is a, a good example of the kind of, um, uh, horizontal and cooperative behavior that, that we can do when everybody is sort of communicating.
And we certainly have a number of committees who have done just that, as you point out, uh, on this particular one. Susan?
Um, actually Jane covered what I was going to say. So I, I, I'm really glad that this has come before us and, um, we have an opportunity to, um, make a statement about it.
And I'm, um, assuming if it, this does, um, pass by the select board, I will ask, um, Jeremy or Chris to add, um, signature lines to it so that it can be signed before we then send it up to, um, all the various, um, parts of the legislature, uh, that have been identified at the bottom of that resolution. So I, I think we're, if there's no other discussion, I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to approve the resolution in opposition to state subsidies and incentives for biomass plants as included in the meeting material stated March 29th, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Um, Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
Um, that's unanimous and the chair so declares. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I think we're now going to move on to review the order of draft articles, um, for the annual town meeting warrant. They, uh, they, that all, that list was also included in our packets. As I looked at it, um, it parallels to a fair degree of the order, uh, that was used, um, at last year's town meeting. Uh, not a totally identical because obviously there's some new material in there, but, um, so today we're just commenting on the order.
I thought it was very straightforward. I don't see any changes to, to suggest.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think I agree, but, um, I had some questions. Um, I know we don't have the text yet about, of the articles. So I'm assuming that at a future meeting, we have the text and that's when we take positions.
Yeah. Yeah. Right now we're just concentrating on the order.
Okay. So there's a few articles that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Whoops.
If you have, if you have a general question, because you don't tote, you don't know what the subject matter is at all, I, I suppose we could, um, help each other out on that. But other than that, go ahead with your questions.
Okay. So what I did was I looked through, um, last year's warrant to see, and yes, we're following a very straightforward order. But I see a number of new articles that I haven't seen before. And so, uh, maybe this isn't the time to ask some of these questions. Um, like for example, we have two articles on OPEB, two articles on parking meter funds. Um, a second article on senior means exemption. And so I just sort of have this question about why we need all these extra articles. But perhaps this isn't the meeting where we're going to be going over those. Maybe you'd prefer to do it at the time when.
Uh, you know, I would, I would assume that especially the financially related ones are here because they relate to budget items. Um, that need to be addressed.
Right. I just.
Then we'll get, then we'll get the detail later. Yeah.
Right. I'm sure there's some reason why we didn't have an OPEB article in the past, but we have two of them this year, et cetera. So. Um, all right. Why don't I hold on to those questions? And then I see her sponsor, um, well, I guess the one that I particularly have a question about is the neonicotinoid article. Um, it looks like that's coming in now as petition article. Um, right now, I saw that forward article.
Um, like Carrie, maybe I can, or Linda, if you, if you would like to speak to that, let me get in your way.
No, uh, go ahead.
I, I am, this was my advice because the committee has not been receipt, reseeded.
Right.
So until the charter is finished or the, uh, bylaw is changed, uh, or what am I saying? The charge is changed and we reset the committee. The committee couldn't put this forward. So instead, the members of the committee did.
Great. Okay. So it's coming in as a petition article. Okay. That, that makes a lot of sense. And then my last question is about the planning board articles. Um, I have no knowledge of what order they should go in. And I would rely on what the planning board recommends. So I just want to check that what we have here is the order that the planning board wants to have these articles in.
Uh, I'm sure the town moderator's been in discussion with the planning board and if she hasn't already, she will be. Um, but the town moderator, um, clearly will be making final decisions on all of this, I would think. Uh, just, you know, taking our advice and looking for our recommendations.
Okay. Great.
Well, I mean, actually I think this is why we're having this on the agenda is that it, it's up to us, the order, right?
I just want to say about the planning board, when in observing their discussions, this is the order in which they considered the articles. But I'm not sure that's the same thing as expressing a preference for order.
I know in previous years.
And they would have, yeah.
I know in previous years, they, you know, they had a, a certain flow they wanted, or maybe Matt can explain.
And typically if they had, you know, they voted on them in this order, that's what we always did. So.
Okay.
I think that, that then none of them on the face of it have any dependencies on one another. So even if there's some reason that they're slightly off, I don't think it's a catastrophic problem.
Great. Thank you. Good.
Um, we can just forward it forward. We can.
We can just, for the, we can double check that with the town, the town planner, and make sure we have that right. But I think Chris had got the feedback from that. But we'll make sure that's right.
Great.
I had a question about some of the ones that don't have a sponsor yet, such as the Home Rule legislation by law amendment on the regulation of fossil fuel infrastructure, the senior means test property tax exemption. You know, they're obvious, they're the ones that don't have...
So I would, I would say that the infrastructure for fossil fuel is likely to be the select board?
That's what I was assuming, but yeah.
And the senior means tested probably the same? But that's just...
Right, I, I just, it's a way of looking at where they are in the, I mean, again, today's job is to, to organize, sorry.
I had a question about the neonicotinoids. Because I, that was originally proposed last year, but then not moved because of, and I, I thought that what we decided last year was that any article in that category that was not moved would be sponsored by the select board in the, in the subsequent year. But I remember incorrectly.
You're remembering correctly, and it's a good, but it raises a good question. Because Carmen asked me to make an announcement at the last meeting, which said that any business cannot be carried over from the previous year. So, so whether or not that is the impact here, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
But it's a good question, and we'll check it out.
And in fact, I asked Mark to talk to Carmen.
And Carmen's just joined us, so.
Just in time.
Just in time to answer some good questions. Welcome, Carmen.
Thank you.
We're already generating all kinds of questions regarding this excellent list that's before us. So Susan, why don't you start with your question?
My question was about the neonicotinoid article, article number 40. And this was not moved last year because, you know, it was among a number of articles that were not moved. But I thought that the agreement was that the select board would sponsor any of those articles when they did get moved. So they...
And Susan's raising the question after a discussion, Carmen, that we just had, which was that it's now coming in as a citizen's petition because the committee is no longer in formation. And so an individual is bringing it forward as a citizen's petition. So, so that was the previous conversation to Susan's question.
Although I would just offer that that's, that's a timing issue. And we simply haven't updated the, the charge, which has been requested of us.
So if the select board wished to sponsor this article, it would certainly be open to the board to discuss that with the petitioner and see if they are content to have the select board substituted as, as the sponsor of the article in the warrant. And that there'd be nothing wrong with that.
So sorry to hit you right away with the question that was on the floor. Did you want to make some opening remarks about the, the list? I think we generally felt that this was a straightforward list as we saw it, and didn't necessarily have any recommendations for changing the order as presented.
Sure. So the, the order of the warrant is the prerogative of the Board of Selectmen, or, excuse me, select board. And there's usually a first stab at the order taken by town staff with some input from me, and that's what this order represents. So you are free to move this around as you wish. I, I feel that because we're going to work very hard to complete the warrant in a single day, in a single session this year, the order of the articles is probably less important than it is, it has less impact on the meeting than it does when we're going to have two or three successive evenings, and you know that you're likely to have more turnout on certain evenings than on others. So that once, once people are there, they will tend to stay there for, for, for the whole warrant. So it's, it's less of an issue. I suppose you could, if there were anything toward the end in, for example, the zoning articles, which is complicated to understand, and you would want people to be ahead of their fatigue point so that they can understand and follow, you could think about moving the zoning articles as a group to sooner in the, in the warrant order. But I, I do expect that this year, as we did last year, we'll try to make a very robust use of the consent calendar. No decisions on that until after we're through with the five hearings. But we'll try to be, put everything that we can reasonably put on the consent calendar in order to assist us in streamlining the meeting and completing it in a single session. And again, as I did last year, I will only put on the consent calendar articles in which there's not controversy at the hearings and on which the select board, and if it's within the purview of the finance committee, the finance committee recommends affirmative action by town meeting. So, and once that list is put together, I will bring it to you. So, and we won't have presentations this year. We'll have a book of town meeting materials, as we did last year. And we'll have the floor open for questions, comments. And if there are amendments of folks moving an amendment, we'll be permitted some time to speak to the amendment, and article sponsor will be permitted some time also to speak on a proposed amendment. So pretty much like what we did last year. But I, I think that currently the articles are grouped in a way that makes sense in terms of their topics. And without having gone through the hearings on the zoning articles, I don't have a point of view as to whether any of them is unduly complex so that it would make sense for them to be earlier in the meeting while people are a little fresher.
Okay, Susan, do you, do you have a point of view on that? You're the liaison to the planning board, are you not? You're on mute, Susan.
Now that you mention it, some of them are, are pretty straightforward, but I, I think Carmen's point about the attendees being fresh, because there are some complexities that... But the way this is, is set out, it looks, I'm not sure where else to put it, because when I look at this, there are a bunch of, in my mind, there are many articles that may indeed end up on the consent calendar, like the enterprise funds and that, and certainly the, the personnel classification and compensation. So I guess for now I'd leave them where they are, because I don't really have a suggestion about where else to put them.
It is, you know, it is true that consent agenda somewhat takes care of some of these other items, and it's difficult to anticipate where they would fall exactly, yeah.
Right, until we create the consent agenda, we're, ordering is a little, it's a little cart, cart and horse issue.
Okay. Any other comments? Terry?
I just want to comment that I think it was pretty unanimous that everybody was really thrilled with last year's town meeting, that it was outdoors and finishing one day. And to hear that we might be doing that again and finishing again in one day, it's such a great goal. And I think the consent calendar was really crucial for that. And the other piece that's really crucial is that we have a lot of publicity for the hearings that are coming up. Because that's the only time that you're allowing presentations, pretty much. So not everybody knows that. Even though we did it last year, we really need to get the word out about that.
I would also suggest that when we do, I assume that we're going to film the hearings, and that those films are available by, you know, by article, by, by just, so that anybody wanting to refresh themselves before they walk into town meeting can do so.
Carmen?
Yes, two things, yes. Last year, we did put on the website the hearings on the articles organized by here, by article number. So it was quite, it was easy for people to find the hearings. And we didn't know, at the time we published the warrant last year, what sort of town meeting we would be having. This year, we do know. And so I have drafted a couple of paragraphs for inclusion in the warrant that will explain what the format will be for this year's town meeting, and will urge people to watch the hearings live or go to the website, because that's where they're going to see the presentations on the articles. People can still, I really didn't feel like the deliberation was lacking last year on, on the articles. People came with their questions, they got their questions answered. And there were good narratives prepared that went in the town meeting materials. And I think a lot of people did go and review the hearing information on the website. So it seemed to work okay. And I would hope that it would work better this year because it's our plan from the beginning, so that we can explain to people from the beginning that that's our plan. And I would plan to work also with Erin Stevens to make sure that notices go out through our social media presence, the town's social media presence, to remind people when the hearings are coming up and remind them that this is where they're going to hear about the articles for town meeting, because there won't be formal presentations at town meeting. And we'll also send out, we've, we've done one reminder already to article sponsors that they should treat the hearings very seriously, because that's going to be their presentations on the articles. We did that at the town preview meeting, town meeting preview meeting. But we'll do it again when we send out deadlines for materials to be submitted for the hearings and so forth. There'll be a reminder to everyone that there's a dual purpose or an additional purpose to these hearings this year, which is make sure you put your best foot forward in terms of explaining what you wish to about the article that you're sponsoring.
Okay. Any other suggestions for Carmen? Well, thank you very much. And thanks to Chris Carmody and all the committees and everyone who have gotten this, to this point, and you, Carmen, as well. So we'll proceed.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
All right.
I can move to approve the order of the annual town meeting warrant as discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. All right, thank you, Carmen. Aye. All right, the next item is regarding the extending the tour guide terms through December 31, 2021. And there's Beth. So Beth, would you like to speak to it, why you're asking the select board to consider this?
Sure, of course. Thank you for having me. So the tour guide licenses have historically been on a May cycle. And last year, if you recall, we extended those and we sent them out in June so that they would have expired this year, at the end of June, early July. Due to the pandemic, most tour guides were not operating. And the tour guide season historically, for most of the guides, is April through October. So the guides have provided feedback to me that it would be easier on them if the cycle became a calendar cycle. So based on the timing of when the tour guide course is offered, which is a requirement for becoming a tour guide, that class is offered late spring and into late winter interspring. So the guides would not have time to apply for a license, because they'd still be taking the class. So by moving it to a calendar cycle, it allows them to take the class, get their feet wet, and then apply for the following year as a guide. So I worked with Jeremy. It would be my recommendation if we extend the current license that people have through the end of this calendar year, and then start the cycle fresh so that we are on a calendar cycle moving forward.
And Beth, it's, I, I learned today that we currently have 95 license holders?
We do.
Okay. you know who, you know the population, basically, of who holds these licenses. I'm just wondering, with all the other commitments that people need to make in December, whether that could be a potential problem?
I was thinking we would go out with the license renewals late fall. So at the end of the tour guide's normal season. So we'd send the notices out for, you know, October, November. And then they would renew in time for being valid January 1st. So we would give them some time. Historically, it looks like there was only a, a week or two notice for when the renewals were, and it, and it's been either May or July, if, if I look back in the records correctly. So yeah, we wouldn't send it out for December 31st, but I would send it out in October, when the tour guide season is winding down, to make sure that they want to renew for the following year.
Very good.
Okay. As to who I know, I have 18 of them working for me. So the rest are drop by tour guides, they work for the Concord Museum. Jeremy and I are working on better data collection so that we know which groups they actually work for, so that we're better able to track them and also, you know, necessarily find people that may be in violation and not have those licenses.
Very good. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Move to extend the terms of Concord tour guides set to expire on May 31, 2021 to December 31, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Will the chair, please, call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye, with gratitude.
And I, ditto. And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Thanks so much, Beth.
Thank you, guys, for having me. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too. All right, committee nominations.
Amy Robinson of 19 Loring Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee, Subcommittee of the Planning Board, for a term to expire on April 30, 2024. Marie Foley, Concord Chamber of Commerce Representative to the Economic Vitality Committee, to fill an unexpired term set to expire April 30, 2022.
Okay, and committee appointments.
Move to appoint Ed Feather of 392 Border Road to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire April 30, 2024.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk, please, call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
Okay, and thanks to Ed for stepping up. Right, committee liaisons and reports. Susan, you can tell we all just wait for you to raise your hand.
I saw on last week, Matt jumped right in there. I have a, a few reports, because I wasn't here last week. The border registrars met Thursday.
The Board of Registars met Thursday after the polls closed and the election again was smooth and the board did a great job. They did announce that one of the members is retiring. So they're looking for a member and that's posted on the on the website, among the other vacancies for committees. Board of Assessors is still going through. They're almost to the end of the abatement applications. So they've done a very efficient job at that this year. Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee was an interesting meeting. They spent a fair amount of time talking about open meeting law because they, they're they have a Google, what is it called? A place where they can all go to look at reports. Their, their work involves reviewing the conservation restrictions. It's typically two members of the committee. And then there's a report done with the staff and then there's comment by the other members and they realized, or deal you did after talking with Kari, that they would have to do that other committee input in an open meeting because there was, someone raised a concern about open meeting law regarding that committee. Economic Vitality Committee is there they talked about spirit of Concord, excuse me, of Concord. And we're encouraging, we'll be encouraging households and businesses to decorate their houses in the in the spirit of Patriots' Day. And post pictures on, on, oh, this is Concord Together. And there'll be prizes for that. Also, Beth mentioned that I think it's up to 200 groups who have traditionally participated or who have participated in the parade in the past will be at, are being asked to submit a 30-second clip. And that will, that will be run in a loop on MMN TV on Patriots' Day. Visitor Center opens by April 5. And the Chamber of Commerce announced they've joined this, something called the Chamber Hub, which is a nationwide organization. And they're working on a new mission statement and marketing services for their participants. Planning Board met on March 23 and they went over the articles that you see on the, in warrant. Personnel Board met on March 23 and talked mostly about the Article 7, I guess it is, on the, on the warrant about changing the role of the, or changing the responsibilities of the Personnel Board. The COA still needs two associate and one full member, but Ginger Quarles, the director, noted that they are cooperating with Open Table and and offering heart-healthy meals, which will be available twice a month. And you can look at the website to find out how to get involved. Also, Dr. Robin Schoenthaller on, will be talking about COVID. And Ginger said she's very well versed enough to speed on all things COVID on April 8, from 1 to 2. The in total, the COA is vaccinated for two shots of 300 people. And that's, that's the shots that were, or the vaccine that was available from the state. And also, there were some available from the West Concord Pharmacy. And it wasn't that they didn't fill their slots. It's that they, they had slots. But you have to order it like in a certain minimum amount, which was probably 100. And they, they only had 46 people signed up. So the rest was gratefully used by the Council on Aging, who continue to do a really wonderful job with supporting elders during this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Who would like to go next?
Okay.
No, ma'am?
All right. So I just have three things to report on. The first was the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, which of course is heavily involved in planning for the Patriots' Day and met with the Concord Independent Battery and the National Park Service representatives on those points. You know, just to ensure that the virtual celebration is pulled off the right way. And in fact, I think we should be hearing from the Concord Independent Battery, I believe, soon. So and I don't mean hearing cannon fire. I mean, from them attending.
Matt, I have a question about that. There was some mention about there possibly being a scaled down version of the dawn salute. Is that?
Well, I won't confirm or deny. I mean, I think that one of the issues here is really not to create publicity around these things. We're trying not to create a crowds or anything like that. So to commemorate, but without creating a, you know, a problem. And so that's why I'm going to continue to be vague about details.
Thank, well, just, we'll rewind the tape, take that out.
Okay. Yeah. The, the second is the Housing Authority had two meetings last week. And unfortunately, they're really struggling in the selection of a new executive director. I mean, the good news is I think that they're viable candidates, but that the committee is split. And so at them present, they've deadlocked on two votes for each of the two leading candidates. So what they've decided to do is to call them in at their next meeting, those two remaining candidates for a final round of interviews and see if they can come to a decision. So that, that's where they are. Then the middle school quite a bit is going on. I think some of you may have seen that there is a new townwide survey that has been distributed. And so I encourage everyone to fill that out, to express their interests. And then there was a Marathon Finance Committee meeting where the Middle School Building Committee presented their current, you know, plan, as well as the there was a discussion of the community requests that go beyond that plan. And, you know, we received a bunch of correspondence here on this board, but others as well, related to some additional requests. And so the discussion about, first of all, process, you know, second of all, the budget. And third of all, you know, any other possible sources of funding. So, you know, that is ongoing as a set of discussions. And, you know, I'm sure there's much more to come. But it was an excellent meeting in that I think that is probably the most extensive discussion of those specific issues that we've heard to date. So we'll keep going.
Hey, thank you, Matt. Terry?
Right. I'll jump in. I only have a few things. I, too, attended that Finance Committee meeting. And it was an excellent discussion of the middle school. And one thing that I heard twice at that meeting, which I didn't know before, was that the Middle School Building Committee had asked for some specific input from the Finance Committee and from the Select Board. And so I'm hoping that we can have a similar discussion here to be able to give that input.
It is planned. Terry, it is planned.
Excellent. Yeah. So I think it's really good that the community is discussing these options. Really good. I also attended the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee. And the, most of the meeting was about the ARCA that Stephen discussed earlier. This is actually the first time that the federal government is providing direct aid directly to cities, towns, and counties. Usually, it all goes through the state. So we're going to, there's $65 billion that goes directly to municipalities. And as Stephen said, we get 5.5 million of that in Concord. There's also additional funding going from the state that will end up in the municipalities. And one of the that came up with it was whether the Select Board is going to need to vote to accept some of this money or it's going to need to be appropriated by town meeting. And, you know, nobody knows any of that yet. So stay tuned. That's an important detail coming up. Unfortunately, it won't make our warrant. So we don't know what we'll need a special town meeting or what we'll do. Hopefully, we won't need a special meeting. And the other thing they discussed was the pilot's payment in lieu of taxes that comes from the state to certain cities and towns. For example, we have MCI Concord here, and we get a payment in lieu of taxes, but we never get the full amount that we're supposed to get. So a recent audit showed that the total for the state is about 45 million, but they're only sending out 31 million a year. So it sort of is in line with what we've been getting, maybe three-fourths of what we're supposed to be getting. So the MMA is, of course, requesting the full funding for it again, as they always do, be included in the FY22 state budget. And then we have a meeting every other week with the Capital Planning Task Force. And it's really interesting, the middle school process because it is a really good example of capital planning, what, what we can learn from it, what we've done right, what we've done wrong, et cetera. And the one thing the committee still seems really split on, the task force, is whether to have a stand, whether to recommend a standing Capital Planning Committee or to recommend that we enhance the process that we have now. So we seem to be, we voted a lot of the other recommendations. And this last one here, we're, we're still struggling with, but we expect to, we have to have a vote soon. So we will. And then we'll be reporting to the board, Select Board. That's all I have.
Okay. Jane? Thank you, Terry.
Well, I'll be short and sweet since I did not have any committee meetings last week. But I did want to, and I noted this to to Jeremy, I did want us to, to update and refresh our, our chart or the spreadsheet that Terry and Matt worked on. That shows where we are with the committees and boards in town and where we have the holes. Because I noted in Susan's share, a couple of holes she mentioned. I happen to know that there are two holes on the Personnel Board. I just, you know, we need to, I think we should regularly, whether we do it in a Select Board meeting, when we're doing our liaison reports, it'd be good to sort of go back and make sure our knowledge is up to date with the, with our spreadsheet. So everybody has the same information.
Thank you, Jane. Apropos that comment, I would comment that we still are seeking someone for the Hanscom Field Advisory Committee and someone who is willing to productively engage with committee reports that come out and some key discussions there. So in other words, it's not helpful to have a representative who's only going to complain, but someone who can really take the time and effort to dig into some of the reports that are issued or environmental studies and so forth and provide helpful feedback in addition to raising citizen concerns regarding noise. I'm not saying not to do that at all, but that can't be the sole focus. So we, we would love to find a community volunteer ready to take on that assignment. As liaison to the FinCom, I, too, thought that was a very interesting meeting. I would say that I was impressed with the thoughtful sort of processing of the requests that they were hearing from citizens regarding an extension of the design to accommodate, you know, an expansion of the gym or auditorium or art space, et cetera. That, they did a good job, I think, of talking through the issues. And also asking for some additional data that would be helpful in terms of helping people make some decisions. Also attended the Junction Village Open Space Task Force. As the town manager already mentioned, they really are off to a great start. They've done another site walk recently. The engineer has done a survey of the area and they're waiting for some response on that. They impressively ticked off about 12 other committees that they need to interact with regarding some of the material that they're going to be considering going forward. The next item, the next meeting, they're hoping to bring in David Wood from the museum and some other history specialists who are going to talk about the history of the area. So if anyone's interested in that, they're hoping to schedule all those people for the, for the next meeting. And they are planning on a public forum in January, excuse me, in June or July to sort of bring forward three different concepts of the, how to treat the property and get some public reaction to that. Before that happens, they're going to be sending out requests for bids to some landscape architects. And basically, they're looking at passive use of that land. But that's yet to be fully determined. And so that'll complete my report. Okay. Miscellaneous correspondence. Let me say that the correspondence in the packet is only representative of over 25 very, very similar letters that we received on the middle school design and a desire for the particular people who wrote in to see some expansion for the gym, auditorium, and art space. So they were very similar. So you have a representative sample in there. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Is there a second? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
I think this sets a record, almost. Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.